Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Furman. Dr. Hans.
Here.
Mr. Landsman.
Here.
Ms. Newman. She did notify us that she would not be in attendance. Um, Mr. Cowan. Ms. Root. Here. Dr. Taub.
Here.
Ms. May. Ms. Woodward.
Present.
Mr. Torres, um, he notified me that he'd be, um, present around five o'clock. And Ms. Amy Dyer.
Here. Thank you Sheila. Uh, public comments? We do not have public comment at this time, but I do want to remind people they can add their public comment to the chat and they can also submit a comment online and we will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we just need to move on to, um, approving tonight's agenda. Uh, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. Um, I am going to pass it on to Mr. Landsman. He's going to do an introduction to our newest board member.
Okay. I want to take a minute and welcome you, John, to our board for the first of many meetings that we have every month. Um, but, uh, look forward to...I know you've been attending for...as a public member a few times, so it'll be great to have you providing insight, uh, into here as well. So, welcome.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Welcome, John. Okay, we are going to move on to the business ops portion. Um, we...just as a note, we do not have any, um, financial reviews today. Those are going to be moved to the general board meeting because Anya is at NatCon. So, um, beyond that, uh, we are going to need to fill our vacancy for the business ops committee. We do have one position available. Um, Jonathan, did you want to...do we need to solicit for this?
Um, I can...I can do that if you'd like. Okay. So, uh, you would be filling that slot, John? But if there's someone who's on policy that would like to switch over, then...then you would have a chance to join policy instead. Is there anyone here that...who's on policy that's interested in sliding over? Okay, I guess, welcome to the business ops team.
Thank you.
At least that's what we're calling it until we pass the new bylaws and then it'll be a finance committee.
Okay, thank you. Um, that is it for business ops. So, we're just going to move right along. Uh, the next is going to be the policy management. Um, I will be overseeing this for Ms. Newman. So, the first thing that we have are the quarterly updates. Um, we're going to start with the quality management team update, um, presented by Ms. Marquita Massey. Ms. Amy Dyer, why we have a little bit...can I just make, um, put on record that Mr. Cowan is present?
Good evening, everyone. I am Marquita Massey. I'm the Director of Quality and Regulatory Compliance here at OCHN. And tonight I'm going to give you a, uh, status report on a couple of areas that fall within my team on our annual plan. Next slide, please. So, on this slide is a high-level overview of pretty much what our department is responsible for. So, we are a team of fourteen staff. Myself and Wendy Schiller are the, uh, management staff on the team. Wendy is the manager...manager of quality improvement. Some of our responsibilities, uh, they're outlined on the slide there, but I'm just going to go over a few. We do, uh, state reporting quarterly to, um, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, which is now, um, under a new name that I...I can't recall right off. Um, we also do, um, external reviews, um, which includes accreditation reviews, reviews from, um, the state and reviews from the External Quality Review Organization, which is a contractor of the, uh, state that is, uh, contracted to ensure that the PIHPs are following the rules outlined in the Code of Federal Regulations. We also do network site reviews, um, for all of our contracted sites. That includes health and safety reviews and hospital reviews. And we have a dedicated audit team that goes out into all the, uh, contracted residential sites to conduct, uh, reviews and audits. Uh, my team also oversees HIPAA privacy and corporate compliance issues that are reported. And then we're also responsible for policy management. Next slide, please. So, today I am going to be providing you with an update on two goal areas that are in the annual plan. And my report that I provide you...to you tonight is also going to include an update on, uh, corporate compliance. So, this slide here outlines three goal areas, three specific activities that fall under the goal area of meeting MDHHS contract requirements. So, in the, uh, contract, there are metrics that PIHPs are given payment incentives for, for, um, reaching the established goals. The first two goals that are bulleted here, the joint care management processes and the follow-up after hospitalization for persons with mental illness within thirty days, are metrics that are managed by our nursing staff here at, um, OCHN. So, I am not going to be talking about those tonight. I am going to be covering the third bullet that looks at follow-up after emergency department visits for alcohol and other drugs. So, there is a payment incentive that the state has available for PIHPs for reducing racial and ethnic disparities for that metric. Next slide, please. So, a description of this metric, which is also a...a HEATIS measure and the acronym is F U H...um, F U A, I'm sorry. Um, this applies to any beneficiaries that are over the age of thirteen years old that have been admitted to an emergency department with the diagnoses of alcohol and other drug dependence and, uh, has a follow-up visit within thirty days of that discharge from the emergency department. So, the denominator would be that group right there that's described in that first bullet and then the numerator would be those that, um, were seen for follow-up care within the thirty days of that discharge. So, at the state level, the data is, um, stratified by race and ethnicity and it's provided to, uh, the PIHPs. It's provided to us through Care Connect 360. There is a bit of a time delay and when we receive that, um, the delay is usually about six months. So, the data is not super real time. But what we...what the department, um, will be doing is measuring performance for calendar year twenty against calendar year twenty twenty-one and then, uh, determining whether or not there is, um, an incentive payment needed. So, the goal is to reduce disparity between the index population, uh, which is the white population, and at least one minority group. The next slide. Uh, this is a little small. The next slide is bigger, so, um, you'll be able to see that hopefully a little more clearly. Um, but you can see the trend lines for each of the, uh, couple of minority populations and also our OCHN, um, trend data and also Michigan Medicaid data. So, the orange is, um, overall OCHN performance. The dark blue is Michigan Medicaid overall. The light blue is the Hispanic population. Yellow is the African-American population and then gray is, uh, the index population, the...the white race. So, you can see from...let's go to the next slide because it's bigger. Okay. So, this, uh, slide shows that our OCHM performance, which is the orange line, has trended above the Michigan Medicaid rates, which is the dark blue line. Um, OCHM performance for the, uh, white race and also for Hispanic is also above the Michigan Medicaid rate. So, uh, that...that is, uh, good performance. Our performance for the African-American race has pretty much stayed constant. We haven't seen a lot of, uh, change in that and it's hovered around thirteen to fifteen percent. Um, it shows that we are doing well with the Hispanic race based on, um, our data report, but more work is needed for, um, the African-American, uh, race because there's, um, you can see that there's, um, disparity. We have a, uh, calculator that we can plug in, uh, numbers that the state has provided to us that we can use to determine if there's been significant statistical significant, uh, differences in decreasing the variance. The, uh, data here, the most recent data we have, you can see from here, is from like, uh, June of last year and, um, and that's because there is a lag in, uh, Care Connect 360. At, uh, the state level, we were recently advised that they're making some refinement to the...how the Hispanic population is, um, captured in our data. Previously, there...the practice with the demographic data at the state level was to include, uh, any individual that indicated Hispanic as, uh, either a secondary, um, ethnicity or race. But going forward, they're only going to be in the...uh, including individuals that have indicated Hispanic as a primary ethnicity. So, we are going to likely see a smaller denominator and that may impact our...our rates.
A couple of questions on this slide then. Do we have the data in Odin to take a shot at guessing based on the...the primary, instead of primary and secondary for, um, for Latino or for Hispanic? And then as well, is there any way we can also look at...so, a second question is upping, you know, because if we can double the number of folks that, um, are of African-American, that would just, you know, I know it's a big...it's a big lift to double the number from fourteen or fifteen percent to get to thirty, but that would put us over the numbers with the state and that would give us a higher, I assume, a higher, um, bonus.
Thank you for your question. And yes, we do have, um, race information in Odin. Our, uh, challenge is modeling our data after...measuring our data in the same way the state is going to be measuring their data. They get their data from the Medicaid eligibility information that comes from Bridges. Um, and we don't have that data, so, um, we can do that and I...I do believe, um, we've, uh, done some work on that, but it's not going to match the performance data that the state uses for the incentive. But that will give us information on what we're doing here locally.
Right. But I know we get some of those demographics on our member file that we get from the state. And if...if our...if we're more conservative than they are, then we work that much higher...harder and we end up overachieving.
Mm-hmm.
So, just a thought.
Yep. We can, um, look at that, um, that we do get that data, so we can, uh, you know, look at how we are seeing how we're performing and compare that to what the state is seeing. So, we can move...actually, this is my, um...there's one more slide here. So, there are barriers and there are some actions that we've taken as a result of this. For, um, SUD information, of course, uh, confidentiality, uh, flag al...always, um, spurs up. So, if there isn't a release, we can't really, uh, share information. The emergency departments aren't going to share information with us and the health plans aren't going to share information, um, with us. The, um, other issue here is that the data that comes from the, um, emergency room admissions and discharges, it's not real-time data. So, we are, uh, ki...we're not...we're a little bit delayed in being able to follow up timely with that. But in terms of some of the actions we're taking to combat that, the, uh, second bullet that's under actions, there is an activity underway right now with the admission discharge and transfer data. It's a pilot with, uh, my hand on the use of e-consents. So, there is a, uh, pilot provider that will be enrolling folks in obtaining consents upon entry into the program. And if there is a consent in place and everybody...all the providers that have an active relationship with that individual will be able to, uh, get that information. So, that is very promising. That will give us some, uh, real-time data that we'll be able to, uh, respond to quickly. If we have the data, then we can respond, but if we don't, it's...it's a little bit challenging to...to really, uh, do anything with that. Um, with that data from that, uh, pilot, we would be able to build, uh, dashboards to be able to share this information with our providers so they could have it right at hand to really, um, take action on and follow up to make sure people are getting into services quickly. Next slide, please. Are there questions on this part of my talk?
So, it's being measured...is it just the follow-up call and the offer to enroll into a program? Or would they have to enroll into the program for it to count towards what is being measured?
Um, for this measure, they have to actually be seen.
Okay.
Um, within thirty days of discharge by a provider.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
If the individual is not already in treatment, who does the follow-up?
Well, that's part of the, um, issue. If somebody's brand-new to services, we wouldn't, uh, know about the individual. That's what makes the admission discharges and transfer information so important. It's...it's a challenge if somebody's brand-new to the, uh, system and we don't have a, uh, release on file.
Because oftentimes, a lot of your young people are not going to be in treatment for substance use disorder.
Yes, you are absolutely correct. And I know that, um, work that's been in place for a while, uh, with the SUD team is an effort to try to, uh, locate peers in the, um, hospitals. And that's been met with some resistance from the hospitals. But, um, it's my understanding that it's still being, uh, worked on. It hasn't been, um, discarded, so, um, we're hoping that that can actually happen. Because that would make a big difference. Um, we...if there aren't any more questions, we can move on to the next slide. And this slide gets into the other, uh, topic area that I wanted to cover, uh, in my talk and it's, um, a goal area that's also pertaining to meeting MDHHS contract requirements. And there is a contract requirement that PIHPs have a program integrity compliance program as defined in the...in the Code of Federal Regulations. And you have the code right there. And the, uh, program that is in place needs to address all these, uh, bullet areas that are listed here. So, in my, uh, next slide, I am going to, um, review the practices that OCHN has in place to address these, um, areas that are required to be in place for a compliance program. Can move to the next slide? So, we, um, meet the requirements by having, of course, a policy that outlines everything that must be, um, enacted within the program to make sure that it meets requirements. We have staff assigned, the primary responsibility for investigating issues and monitoring network activities. We also have annual requirements for staff to have annual training and, uh, board member training. And it's also a requirement for our provider network staff to also have training. Um, we have reporting sources. I mean, there really isn't a wrong door for any kind of an issue to be reported to OCHN. Information can come to us through our hotline. Uh, we also have information on our website that staff, um, and stakeholders can complete to submit a concern or an issue. Um, we also have...we have a dedicated email address that, um, our network providers can, uh, submit, um, concern or an issue. There's contract language in all of our providers' contract that requires them to report information to us within forty-eight hours. And then for our staff here, we also have an Intranet reporting form that staff can, uh, use to report an issue. And of course, there's always the simple phone call. If you see something that just doesn't feel right, you can, uh, definitely make an inquiry and it'll be, uh, followed up on and investigating...uh, investigate it. We have, um, reports that we can look at and review to, um, monitor for any type of, um, issues that appear to be inappropriate. So, um, we're...can...we can look at, um, overlapping claims. We can, um, look at, uh, impossibility scenarios. Um, our Odin has some edits in place so that, uh, if a staff person is reporting that they were making a contact with, um, person X at four thirty PM and that person lived in Clarkson, there would be no way that that person could still make a contact with another person at like four thirty-five in Oak Park or Southfield. So, um, Odin is, um, very helpful in helping us to detect any, um, type of edits. In those kind of cases, a provider wouldn't even be able to enter a note to document that. Our, uh, compliance committee meets quarterly and on the compliance committee is all the, uh, senior management of the organization. Whenever an issue is reported and it's investigated, disciplinary actions are implemented when needed and corrective action plans are, um, implemented as well. And then on a quarterly basis, we have to report information to the MDHHS OIG department on, uh, compliance activity. This next slide, um, it...it is a little small. I'm hoping you can read it. Um, but from, um, here is a summary of, uh, cases and categories that were reported in the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-two. So, the first category that's listed here pertains to, um, overpayments. This, um, case pertained to an individual that was, um, working in, uh, two different agencies, uh, and reporting that she was working at the same...two different agencies at the same time. So, this was reported to, uh, law enforcement. It was investigated and it was determined that, um, the person, I think, actually, um, agreed to, um, and admitted that, yes, in fact, that they were working in two different places at the, uh, same time. So, that's an overpayment where there had to be recruitment of, uh, funds. Uh, the second category that...of recordings that occurred in the quarter pertained to data mining. And this is the type of information that we can detect through our reports that we have. I mentioned the Power BI reports and I...and Odin edits that come to our attention that require investigations. The next category that's listed here pertains to compliance...complaints and referrals. And the data source for this, um, area of reporting came to us from the state OIG office. Um, the OIG had received a couple of anonymous complaints that services were billed that were not provided. So, as a result of that, there was an investigation done to determine if that, uh, was actually true and, um, we did not find that that could be substantiated. And then the last item, um, category pertains to audits. On a annual basis, we conduct claims verification audits to ensure that claims that were submitted...we do this on a random sample of claims. We do this to confirm that claims that were submitted for payment, that they were actually provided appropriately documented and provided by, um, a qualified, uh, person. As a result of that, um, there were some findings this year and there was, uh, recruitment. This year is the first year that we've contracted with a...a new vendor for this activity. Uh, Jefferson Wells is the vendor. You may recall that I presented to the board on this back, I think, in September, that we were, um, looking to contract with this vendor. So, we were able to, um, expand our sample and review more cases and there, um, definitely was, uh, recruitment, um, and as a result of that.
So, th...these make up some of our fraud, waste and abuse processes?
Yes.
To catch things that should not be happening?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, next slide. So, another, uh, group of activities that, um, happened that also are reported, um, to my area pertain to, um, anything compliance. So, um, HIPAA privacy issues, um, things that have to do with ethics and integrity. Uh, we've had, um, a couple of issues that pertain to out-of-state...out-of, um, date service authorizations. And then there was also in this quarter, uh, attempted, uh, breach. So, in terms of HIPAA privacy, some of the, uh, common issues that are reported, um, pertain to misdirected, um, emails, um, sending unencrypted emails (cough) and misfiling of documents. Uh, a document pertaining to, uh, Sam Smith that maybe accidentally filed in, um, uh, James Jones's chart. And that's inappropriate. That's, um, a, you know, a breach. So, that's something. Those are the kind of things that, um, are reported in that category. In terms of, um, ethics and integrity, um, we had a, um, complaint, a inquiry that came to us by way of our, uh, customer services team. Um, an individual was inquiring about the pass-through of a direct...of the direct care wage increase. So, as a result of that, um, there was an investigation done. The provider was asked to submit, um, evidence that they did in fact pass on the wage increase to the, uh, direct care staff. And, uh, the information was provided to us by the provider to support that the increase was passed on to staff. So, that, um, issue, um, was addressed, uh, satisfactorily. We requested payroll information and conducted the investigation. In terms of out-of-date service authorizations, um, a valid authorization has to be in place in order to process a payment, meaning a claim. The service authorizations have to be within the date of the plan of service. In this specific case, there was an individual that was hospitalized for a lengthy amount of time and the authorization had expired when the, uh, provider wanted to bill. The provider was not able to, uh, bill because there was not an authorization in place to cover that. So, that had to be addressed outside...that was an outlier, so that had to be addressed outside of our normal processes to, uh, ensure that the provider was paid and that the plan of service was revised to cover the, uh, time of that, uh, period. Next slide. So, in terms of, uh, corrective actions, when any kind of issues are reported to, um, OCHN, of course, there's always training, additional coaching and counseling to staff pertaining to the protection of, uh, protected health information. There's, um, been implementation of additional verification checks of documentation prior to billing. There's been implementation of additional verification checks of documentation prior to billing. There's been increased frequency of billing verification checks at the provider level as part of corrective actions. And then I mentioned previously that we have a new vendor onboard to help us with performing the billing verification audits. So that has enabled us to have a larger sample of cases reviewed. And a recent update here is that we are issuing explanation of benefit statements directly to persons served on a random sample of people that are served quarterly. This was something previously that our core providers were doing. We've taken on that responsibility here at OCHN. So that is an information source when sent to an individual service intended to alert the individual that, "Did you get this service?" If you, it stated here. If you did not, call customer services and we will investigate. So that's the intent behind that. We just started that this quarter. We'll be doing that quarterly going forward. And the next slide, please.
Are there any board questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Marquita. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of really good information. Okay, moving on, we are going to get a Provider Network team update from Gillian Trumbull.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay? It's been a while since I've used the microphone. Yeah. And lean in. Okay, can you hear me better now? Okay, thank you. Please let me know if I move away again or start talking too fast. My name is Gillian Trumbull. I'm the Director of the Provider Network here at OCHN. What that means is my team oversees, with the exception of our substance use providers, we oversee the provider network, including our core providers, Applied Behavioral Analysis, Vocational, Specialized Residential and CLS, Common Ground, New Oakland Hospitals, and then other ancillary services. We manage that contractual relationship. We manage several of the waivers. And we are often the liaison between OCHN and the provider network. We're also going to be the team where if there needs to be contract action, our team will take the lead in implementing any contract action. Next slide, please. So I have a brief update today on a couple of initiatives that are aligned with our annual plan. One is our Direct Support Professional Wage Pilot, and the other is an overview of provider network stability. Next slide. As you know, the Board approved funding to implement a Direct Support Professional or DSP pilot with the goal of assessing impact on wages, on staffing shortages and outcomes to people. It's a limited pilot. There are 11 homes among five providers that are participating, and it began on December 1st. And I'm actually going to have you move to the next slide because I think I'm already talking about what's on the next slide. Thank you. So it will last for at least six months and up to one year. Our hope is that we will be able to keep the pilot in place for one year just because it will give us a better, a better sample for outcome and data in order to make decisions moving forward. But again, it's five providers representing 11 homes. The homes represent people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, adults with mental illness. We have homes that are specifically supporting people with complex medical needs. We have a home represented that's specifically supporting people with complex behavioral needs. And then we have identified homes in each of the four quadrants of Oakland County. There was a specific focus on Northern Oakland County because that is just a historically difficult area to staff. But those 11 homes are spread out in each quadrant and representing different types of people that are receiving services. During this wage pilot, any Direct Support Professional working in those 11 homes is paid a wage of at least $18 per hour. There is an enhanced rate, and I don't have the formula in front of me, and of course, budget and finances is not here to help me out with that, but to make sure home managers are paid more than the Direct Support Professionals in the home. This is all provided monthly, all the information's provided monthly via the financial status report. So when we originally were planning for the pilot, the goal was to pay $15 per hour. We were able to increase it to $18 per hour because with the $2.35 legislatively mandated increase and then the, I think it ended up being around $1.40 increase from OCHN, we were able to change our wage to DSPs across the entire network to $15 an hour. So that gave us the opportunity to work with an $18 per hour wage and hopefully see an impact on these things here. The goal of the pilot is we want to assess staff recruitment and retention. We want to understand the impact on use of overtime and the impact on calls for emergency services such as 911, sending people to Common Ground, and psychiatric hospitalization. And then we're also looking at, are going to be looking at the impact of incident reports or Office of Recipient Rights investigations. So the hope is that the increased rate has a positive effect on all of these areas and ends up being a situation where it would be cost neutral or maybe potentially a cost savings or even a slight, you know, a manageable increase where that we could then implement this network wide. Are there any questions before I move on to my next item?
I guess this is Jonathan Questions Night. Hi, Gillian.
Hi.
So has there, was there a before and after study to see if, I mean, paying them yes is really nice, but have we been able to flatten out the retention curve or improve the retention curve?
So we don't have the data yet, but we did, so the providers who are participating were required to submit all of the information that we're going to be assessing for their organization prior to implementation. And then it's being reported monthly, but because it's only been in place for a couple of months, we don't have, we don't have a gauge on whether there has been any positive impact at this point. But we will reassess those same factors at the end of the pilot period.
And the pilot period ends when again?
So it started December 1st, so it's going to hopefully go for a year, which would be December 1st of 2022, but at least six months. So potentially, it could end in June or July, but we're hoping we'll be able to continue for the full year.
And all funded and underwritten by the state?
I'm sorry, what was that?
All written and underwritten, all underwritten by the state. Essentially Medicaid dollars.
Yes, it's all Medicaid dollars, yes. Yes.
Excuse me. So when will you have some preliminary data on what?
So I'm hoping by the time I give my next quarterly update, we'll have some preliminary data that we can share with the Board.
So are you monitoring it every quarter or will you have the six months data?
It'll probably be the full six months of data at that point.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions on this item? All right.
The next item I wanted to give an update on is Provider Network Stability. And this is something that's in our annual plan most, if not every year, but to monitor ongoing network stability with the focus on assuring we have an adequate network of providers to meet the needs of everybody who's receiving services. We do that through provider credentialing and re-credentialing as well as procurement. And this will be an in-process, an ongoing provider, or item for the annual plan. You can go ahead and move to the next slide. This is an overview of where our network currently stands. So you will see there are, there's actually five core providers, but one provides services to adults with mental illness and children with serious emotional disturbance. So if you're doing the math, it's six, but if you're, if you're counting them out by organization, it's five. We also contract with Community Housing Network. We have 107 specialized residential and community living services providers. They're providing services in specialized residential to over 300 sites and also providing community living services in various other types of settings, in family homes, in apartments with shared roommates. And those are probably the two primary, but other unlicensed type of settings. 11 vocational providers. We recently added 10 ABA providers, so we now have 22 in the network. And then Crisis Services, and there's many other ancillary types of contracts that the team oversees. Move to the next slide. As I mentioned, we recently added 10 ABA providers to the network. The hope is that that will increase capacity, particularly for youth ages seven to 21 who are in need of the after-school and weekend hours, which are the most challenging hours to, they're the greatest demand and also the most challenging to staff. So we're hoping that we're going to have a positive impact on people's access to the service and wait times for services. In addition to that, we're looking at opportunities to expand Provider Network services across the Board in terms of any kind of emergent or urgent procurement when it's appropriate, as well as planning for how we may want to bid out or increase network capacity for all service lines. We also do ongoing credentialing and re-credentialing of the Provider Network. So providers are re-credentialed, they're credentialed when they join the network and then re-credentialed every two years. So in the past, this is the, this is the past quarters worth of data. You'll see that we did initial credentialing for 11. That would include the 10 ABA providers that I referenced. And then I believe the other one was a specialized residential CLS provider. We brought in under emergent, urgent need. And then we are in the process of re-credentialing all of the specialized residential and CLS providers. 21 have been completed in the last quarter. That is proving to be a slightly more challenging group to get re-credentialed because they are so busy right now managing providing services that it's just, it's a lot of back and forth to get information, but we're moving forward with that. And while the Substance Use Network does not sit under the Provider Network team, we do the re-credentialing and credentialing for that group of providers with a representative from that team, and there were 10 re-credentialed in this past quarter. Is there any, I'll, budget, everything that I've covered today falls under Medicaid. There were no additional costs required. The Board approved the Direct Support Pilot prior to FY '22 for the FY '22 budget and no additional costs. So with that, are there any questions?
Okay. So we're doing the re-credentialing and re-credentialing. Is this using the new tool and subscription that we got licensed to last year?
This, the Medversent?
I think that's what it was called.
So that's practitioner credentialing, which is a little bit different in that it's the actual credential, clinical credentialing of the staff. So we are actually, I know Marquita's team is working on other provider types too, but ABA providers, we're piloting with them right now.
Okay. And that's in alignment with NCQA standards?
Yep.
Okay. I don't see any other questions.
Thank you, Jillian.
Thank you all. Okay, we're going to move on to other business. We are supposed to have a Bylaw Committee update from John Paul, but he's not here yet. If you give me a moment, I may be able to pull up my notes from the last meeting that we had.
During the last Bylaw Committee meeting, we just reviewed some of the revisions and recommendations that were discussed during the previous study session, which we will be presenting at the next study session. And I know that one of the big concerns that we might have is timing because the May, June and July study sessions all have pretty substantial information that we'll be covering. So I believe during the next study session, we're going to see how far we get and then determine if we want to set up a special meeting to continue reviewing the bylaws and policies.
Do you remember if there's anything else we discussed?
Yeah, one other thing was that I was not present at the previous study session, but input from the whole Board is very important. We've received some suggestions maybe from one or two members, but it will be helpful and it will help us move a little bit faster if we get input from everyone. So maybe hopefully by the next study session, we will have some more information.
Yes, and we definitely encourage looking through the packets ahead of time prior to the meeting as well.
Any, yes?
So we can prepare. Can you remind us where we left off and then what you're hoping we'll cover in the study session?
Yes, so we left off in section, it was 5.01, Part D.
Okay.
And so we are going to just review the changes that were recommended during the last study session within that section. And then we are hoping to continue on, starting with Section 5.02. And John Paul did just walk in, so, but I don't believe there were any other updates from the Bylaw Committee meeting.
Any other questions about that? Okay, so we will move on to events and outreach. Christine Berg?
Hello, everyone. It's nice to see you. Just a brief list of some of the things we have going on, which is really never brief. First, Oxford Schools update. We do continue to stay in contact with the school district. Honor and Easter Seals Michigan are involved. Common Ground is involved with the building of the Resiliency Center. We did, on Friday, we were called to ask, we were called and asked to meet with the Department of Justice Victims Assistance this afternoon, so right before this meeting, Adam, Kyle, Gillian and myself met with them to talk about their vision in regard to the Resiliency Center and also their expertise on some things we could expect to see in the community in our county and the ways in which they will support us moving forward. So it was a very informative meeting. I'm glad, we're all glad to have them on hand to assist through this process. The strategic plan needs assessment. We continue to gather input from the community. This is, I think I did this last week, so we are over 700 responses now. We're probably closer to 730. Francis is keeping track of everywhere we've gone. Good news, we were looking at some of the responses today, but I think the highest we ever received in the past was 680. So we have surpassed that number. We have another week, two more presentations. But even more important, we have always strived to have the people we serve be the number one group from which we hear responses and input. And this is the first year, they've been number two for the last two years, but this year, the most of our responses have come from people we serve. So we're very excited about that. There was a time, people who've been on the Board for a while, no, there was a time where they would, we would get the least number of responses from them. So we have come a long way in trying to do diligence to, in fact, hear from those we support. In regard to press releases, there's a list of the press releases and media coverage. To add to that, on Friday, Dr. Posey did an interview with Fox News, their digital regarding mental health post-pandemic and some other questions that they had for us. On Sunday, there was an article in Oakland Press about the Oakland County Veterans Resource Fair. Chaka is involved with that. And then today, we were the lead story in Oakland Press for our CIT training for Royal Oak. I think that article's going to be in the Daily Tribune as well. And that initiative was led through our CIT judicial system. Trish from our training and Dr. Posey also oversees that as well. So we've been really fortunate in the last couple of months in terms of our awareness that our local media has been bringing to our organization. Today, we received a request for an interview for Dana from the New York Magazine. Senator Baer had recommended her for that. Senator Baer had recommended her for that. So someone in my position, you know, watching the last couple of years, it has really been helpful having Dana now be in place for two years. She really has a natural ability to build rapport with our media, with our local legislators. And so consequently, what happens is as you get media, you get more media. It just has that ripple effect, and by that, it helps create not only awareness for the community, but credibility in our organization and confidence in people to turn to us. So I was really excited this month and thrilled today with the request from The New Yorker, and we just did an interview with Fortune and Forbes as well. So those are all positive things in creating awareness. As for events, we will be reading the Mental Health Awareness Proclamation at the board meeting. We have mailed the proclamations out to the city councils and the school boards. They do their own approval, they make their own changes. We added the school boards last year. We did launch our website. We're calling it a soft launch because there's what we kind of call a data dump. So they bring all the information over from the old website. We need then to go through every single page, every single link, make sure things transferred correctly. But also, we wanted to put the website in the hands of the people we serve in those work groups and find out if the, the new website was easy to navigate, was there something we may have been missing in information. So we're tweaking that. I expect that to be complete by the end of this month. We did attend the OU Cares Family Event. We had a table at the NAMI's, Michigan NAMI Honors Banquet. We did nominate Pastor Jones, and he won. So he's been a great advocate in terms of promoting mental health for the schools and communities, especially in Pontiac. The SUD vaccination clinics, I'm just thrilled, and everybody has to get my emails about how thrilled I am, but you know, when we wrote the grant, our expectation, hope was we would be vaccinating between 15 and 20 people a week, considering the resistance of people getting substance use services. We vaccinated 40 our first week, this past week, we vaccinated 49, so it's going very well. We expect those clinics to continue through the end of the year. And then next week, we will be doing recordings. We're doing all new service information videos. We did this 2017 or 18, but with the pandemic, we're a little behind schedule, and we use these videos in our website, we use them on our social media, we use them to share. It's just compliments, our written material, to hear people from our staff, people we serve, talk about their role in this organization, and those individuals that we support to talk about their firsthand life experiences and how the services have transformed their We continue to do direct mailers. I do those every quarter. We are looking into some other ideas in terms of having cards that people can keep with them, some QR codes, things that people could keep on their phones that automatically go to their contacts. So just researching new opportunities. We will be hosting the Michigan CIT Conference in May. We will be starting our voter webinars in May as well. For those of you who are new to the board, every election year, we have persons we serve and our staff meet with the people we support, either webinars in person, but just to ensure people understand they have a right to vote. Most often, or very often, the people we serve think, because maybe they live in a specialized residential setting, or maybe they're getting substance use treatment, that they do not have the right to vote. So we try to make them aware of the issues that are important to them, where they can go for information, but also ensure they understand how they can vote and that they actually have the vote. We have our Veterans Tri-County Event coming up in May. Very excited about that. We were asked by the department to host a Veterans Resource Fair for all three counties. Last time I checked, we had about 40 vendors who will be on site. We were just at a meeting, and you know, you get put in places, the more you're in a community. We were with Representative Brenda Carter, and she shared with us that, we were talking about the event, she shared that her only child was in fact about who lost his life, and that she wanted to be at the event, and she is now gonna be one of our speakers at the event. So I was thankful for her willingness to step forward and join us in this effort. And then two things we needed also to announce, Dana would receive the Women of Excellence Award, and Kalana received a special acknowledgement for Corporate Counsel for Crane. So lots of really exciting, positive things going on in our agency, and it makes my job more fun. Any questions for me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Congratulations, Kalana. Okay, so we are going to move on to just an announcement from Edna White regarding the office reopening, some information about that.
I'm here on behalf of Dana. She wanted to share the news with the board that our staff are back. You see a photo series on this slide here. We wanted to make sure that staff got the word out, that we wanted to continue to do our support for autism awareness. So we took photos on the days that our staff came back on Monday and Tuesday of last week. And you see our, our people, they look very happy to be back in the office, and so we just wanted to share some of the guidelines that we're following with the staff returning. So our staff will be using a hybrid schedule as part of their return to work. So we officially reopened back on March the 7th, and we took a phased approach to staff coming back into the office. So our chiefs started coming in on March the 7th, managers and directors on March 21st, and all of our staff, at least the ones assigned to the Troy Building, started coming back last Monday. This phased approach allowed us to learn more about whether we needed to institute other processes, whether we're gonna be our cleaning and hygiene routines, and you know, pretty much to, you know, get a bucket of lessons learned so that we can make the return for everyone to be as smooth as possible. So the structure of the hybrid work format allows staff to come into the office either on a Monday-Wednesday schedule or a Tuesday-Thursday schedule. That schedule still permits a certain amount of physical distancing so that people aren't sitting right next to each other. So our facilities team and our return to work work group, along with the IT team and communications team, worked really hard to set up the mapping so that we can get an understanding of where everyone was sitting so that we can, you know, make recommendations for the, who'd be working Monday-Wednesday and who'd be working on Tuesday and Thursday. We do have the stipulation that if there's a special event, a meeting, or any other reason why someone may need to come into the office on those additional days, the staff understood that there was that stipulation. And we're going to spend this time observing what's happening in terms of community spread. We're in constant consultation with our Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Poseos, who weighs in and gives us recommendations and advice on steps we should be taking to make sure people can still be protected. And people who have private office spaces, they can pretty much choose when they want to come into the office. So any of the two days, or they can even come in on additional days. For our mask policy, we recognize that the agencies who we've been following throughout the entire course of the pandemic, the CDC, Michigan Department of Health and Human Service, Oakland County Health Division, none of them require the use of masks in this type of an indoor setting. We recognize that there are those who would still be very comfortable wearing masks, so we promoted the idea that individuals can wear masks if they choose to. They choose not to wear masks, they don't have to. However, we are encouraging the use of masks, and as you see, when you come into the building, we're making them available for people to use. So we have them stationed throughout the building, and so far, so good, I'd say, with what's been happening with the mask mandate, or the mask policy, I should say. So our Resource and Crisis Center, they're going to be reopening for the, for their staff on Monday, May the 2nd. They did have a reopening for extended services from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The staff there will observe a hybrid work schedule as well. They're gonna be on a rotational basis because they have about 30 access staff assigned there, and there's not enough space, so they're gonna be on a rotational basis there. Those details are being developed. So there is a work group with the leads of the access team and meetings with the access staff so that we can, you know, have conversations with them, find out what if any concerns they have, so that we can work on any resolutions. But that's it for now. We're very happy to have our staff back. It's good to see people collaborating in the workspace itself, and it's wonderful to see people that you haven't seen in two years. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I was wondering about the trainings. Are they gonna continue online, or are they gonna move to like a hybrid, the trainings that OCHN offers?
Well, I don't wanna speak out of turn. I see our training director is tuned in, but I believe she said that they're gonna be planning to start having in-person trainings in June, very specific, with certain limitations. I think the first training she said was gonna be about 30 people.
Okay.
I wanna see how that goes.
And they would do it here, like how they used to do it before the pandemic? I know they would have a lot of trainings on like Fridays and things, and conference rooms and stuff.
I'm not sure what day of the week the training is scheduled, but I do know she said she wanted to have a training starting in June. So we'll see how that goes too.
Thank you.
Are individuals able to walk in at that location for access screenings?
Yes, they will be available for walk-in service.
Okay, thank you. Any other board member questions? Nope. Okay, thank you, Edna.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to the second opportunity for public comment.
We did not have public comment this evening. Thank you.
Board member comments? Adam, go ahead.
Yep, I'd just like to thank everyone for their presentations tonight, whether we're talking quality, or corporate compliance, or the Service Network Team, or the extensive list that Christine talked about tonight with the media attention, or the reopening that Edna talked about. I know that there's a lot of information and a lot of work that went into the presentations, and they're always very informative, so thank you very much.
I just wanted to mention, I was listening in my car ride here to the meeting, just a comment about the direct support wage pilot. I know Jonathan and Majaya had asked questions about the data on it, and it sounds like at six months, but we're looking for a year, but at six months, we might have some data. And so I was just, my thought was, is that the sooner, obviously, we wanna have valid information, what we can get, the better, because then that will show, you know, whether the pilot is hitting the marks of what it's working at, and I think the big thing is the recruitment and retention. I think that is the key one, and if that is showing to be good, then that will kinda lead to all of the other points that we're looking at for that pilot. But I know generally, when I, in like federal and state, with like grant programs and things like that, we usually do like three-year measur, or three-month measurements. But I know this is new, so, but just my thought on that is, is that the data is always helpful, even if it's preliminary to prove to the powers that be that the, that the program, you know, where it's trending. And then secondly, I was walking in and heard most of the Bylaws Committee, and thank you to my committee for, for the update, and so I think they, they pretty much gave all the information. And just reiterating that at our last meeting, we did go over the policies, so those have been finalized, and you will be getting those in hand as a paper copy like you did with the bylaws at the, the plan is at the next board meeting, so you'll have some time to review that about a week or so before the actual study session. And then we are looking to have some conversation about potentially having special meeting for May, June, July, potentially to wrap up the, the bylaws and the policies, because we just wanna make sure that we stay on track and there isn't a huge pause in it. So that, that's our main concern, so, but we can talk more about that at the study session. Thank you.
Thank you, John Paul. Anybody else?
I would just like to welcome our new board member, John Young. Looking forward to working with you, and thank you for your commitment to this board. Thank you.
Okay, there are no other board member comments, we can move on to adjournment. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, seconded by Mr. Cowan. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.